Members, officials, we now move on to session six on security. First of all, I would like to welcome the Secretary for Security and his team to the session. Before I invite members to speak, I will first invite the Secretary to make some brief opening remarks. Secretary, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the draft estimates for the new financial year, the allocation on the security policy area group is thirty-eight point seven billion dollars, representing nine point four percent of the total government expenditure. The two policy areas of internal security and immigration control under my responsibility will account for thirty-two point five billion dollars. The overall law and order situation in Hong Kong saw further improvements in twenty thirteen. The overall crime figure in twenty thirteen represented a drop of four percent, while the violent crime figure registered a decrease of about five point two percent as compared with twenty twelve. Most crimes recorded significant decreases, and seven types of major cases, including robbery, burglary, wending, and serious assault, theft, criminal damage, tried-related offenses, and youth crimes, fell to new lows in the past decade. The major operational targets of the Commissioner's Police for twenty fourteen are to combat violent crimes, riots, syndicated and organized crimes, dangerous drugs, and quick- crash crimes, to promote cybersecurity and combat technology crimes, and to maintain professionalism in ensuring public safety and counter-terrorism work. The police will also create one hundred sixty-nine new posts, mainly for upgrading the Technology Crime Division to a new Cybersecurity and Technology Crime Bureau, strengthening the engagement of young people and the elderly, and strengthening the manpower establishment for Chongqingao Police Division by phase in preparation for its upgrading to Police In order to strengthen police's ability to protect information systems of critical infrastructure and enhance their capability to prevent and combat technology crimes, the police will upgrade the existing Technology Crime Division to a new Cybersecurity and Technology Crime Bureau, CSTCB, in twenty fourteen. The new CSTCB will increase the police's overall capacity capability in handling cybersecurity and combating technology crimes. We will consult the panel on security later this year on the proposed creation of a permanent Chief Superintendent of Police post for the new CSTCB. On engaging the youth and the elderly, young people are the future of our society. The police will enhance engagements with young people through enhanced support to the Police School Liaison Program and different types of activities of the Junior Police Corps with a view to building their self-confidence, instilling positive value in them, developing their leadership skills and self-discipline, and promoting the spirit of serving the community, and so on. The police have since February twenty fourteen fully rolled out the Senior Police Corps program, which will provide an effective platform to enhance communication between the force and the elderly, and to develop partnership with them and enhance the awareness of the elderly on crime prevention and road safety. On immigration service, the number of visitors arriving in Hong Kong has continued to grow over the past few years. In twenty thirteen, the total number of visitor arrivals reached fifty-four point three million, representing a twelve percent increase from twenty twelve. In the twenty fourteen to fifteen financial year, there will be a net increase of one hundred thirty-eight posts in the Immigration Department, among which eighty-five will be deployed for carrying out immigration control duties at control points. We will strive to have them deployed to control points as soon as possible to relieve the manpower pressure there. Convenience measures introduced to shorten the waiting time for clearance in recent years, including the extension of each-channel service to frequent visitors, implementation of non-stamping immigration clearance for visitors, and launching of immigration mobile application for the public to obtain information on the estimated waiting time at land-boundary control points have proven effective. Moreover, following the implementation of the use of automated clearance services on a mutual basis with the Republic of Korea at the end of last year, Immigration Department is actively discussing the further implementation of this service with other European and Asian countries to provide greater convenience to inbound and outbound travelers. Details will be announced once confirmed. On entry of talents, we adopt an open immigration regime and have implemented a series of admission schemes to facilitate the entry of non-local talents. These include the General Employment Policy, the admission scheme for mainland talents and professionals, and the Quality Migrant Admission Scheme, which allow professionals and talents to take up employment or residence in Hong Kong. The immigration arrangements for non-local graduates aim to encourage non-local students to stay in Hong Kong, as at the end of twenty thirteen, there were more than eighty-eight thousand overseas and mainland professionals working in Hong Kong, accounting for more than two percent of the local labor force. In view of Hong Kong's human capital needs, we will strengthen publicity of the schemes and enhance our cooperation with the mainland and overseas economic and trade offices in order to attract more quality talents to Hong Kong and to improve the quality and competitiveness of the population. On screening of non-reformal claims, the Unified Screening Mechanism, USM, commenced operation on the third of March twenty fourteen to screen non-reformal claims amongst removal to another country on various grounds, including risks of being subjected to torture, cruel, inhuman, or degrading treatment or punishment, CIDPP, and/or persecution upon removal to that country. The procedures of the USM follows that for the statutory torture claim screening mechanism to ensure that they meet with the high standards of fairness required by the court and to implement our policy objective, that is, to effectively screen non-reformal claims in accordance with the high standards of fairness required by the court, and at the same time to reduce the chance of the system being abused by anyone to protract his illegal presence in Hong Kong, attracting other economic migrants to come here. On public safety, to enhance public safety, the Fire Services Department will create one hundred and thirty-seven additional posts in the new financial year, mainly for adding ambulance shifts to enhance emergency ambulance services, meeting the additional workload of vetting fire safety provisions arising from the anticipated new housing supply and deploying to the Pet Hen Fire Station to meet the increase in fire service needs, et cetera. To ensure the safety of frontline personnel and the efficiency of operations, MSD will replace fire service and ambulance equipment in a timely manner. The expenses on the procurement of fire appliances, vessels, ambulances, and major equipment, et cetera, for twenty fourteen to fifteen are estimated to be around three hundred and sixty million dollars. MSD also plans to introduce the Registered Fire Engineer Scheme to enable third-party to allow license applicants to choose to use the services of fire engineers of SD in respect of fire safety risk assessment and compliance inspection of fire services installations, et cetera. This will allow business operators to meet their business needs and shorten the time required for obtaining a license. MSD has completed the trade consultation, is preparing the legislative amendments. On custody and rehabilitation of detainees, the Correctional Services Department has been implementing various measures to improve aging correctional facilities. Works of the Partial Redevelopment Program of the Thailand Centre for Women have commenced in mid-twenty twelve and will be completed in end twenty sixteen. Efforts will continue to be made to enhance other PNO facilities, such as seeking funding from the Legislative Council for the replacement and enhancement of the closed-circuit television system for Stanley Prison, and the installation of the electric locks security system at Thailand Centre for Women. SST will continue to provide market-oriented vocational training to inmates and work with various sectors of the community to facilitate the reintegration of inmates into society. On combating drug problems, the government tackles the drug problem in a holistic manner through the five-pronged strategy of preventive education publicity, treatment and rehabilitation, legislation and enforcement, external cooperation, and research. Concerted efforts injected into the anti-drug war in the past few years have seen a substantial decline in the number of newly reported drug abuses and young drug abuses. Nonetheless, in view of the growing problem of hidden drug abuse, we will continue to encourage people with drug problems to seek help early, as well as enhance community awareness on the drug problem to facilitate early intervention for offering assistance. In January, the Action Committee Against Narcotics, AICAN, completed the public consultation exercise on the Rescue Drug Testing Scheme, RDT. AICAN is in the process of analyzing the submissions received and will recommend a way forward within the year. The government keeps an open mind. Community consensus is a prerequisite for proceeding with the scheme. Tackling drug activities at source is an important aspect of our anti-drug strategy. Taking into account the prevalence of transnational trafficking activities, the Customs and Sciences Department will set up a dedicated team supported by additional fifty-six-two posts to strengthen existing law enforcement actions and to foster closer liaison and intelligence exchange of mainland and overseas law enforcement agencies, allowing the mounting of time-critical joint operations. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my opening remarks. My colleagues and I will be happy to answer questions from members. Thank you.
I think I will still allow four minutes for questions and answers for each member. Please be concise, members, otherwise usually there won't be enough time for reply. Mr. Wong Kok-hing, thank you. SB oh four five, Maintenance of Law and Order. Now, the Taiwan incident is escalating, you know, the opposition against the trade pact, and there are people in Hong Kong saying that if they can do it in Taiwan, can we do it in Hong Kong? This is rather trying to stir up emotions. Now, today is April Fool's Day. Secretary, how could we ensure that wrong messages will not be disseminated and mislead the people of Hong Kong or fool the people of Hong Kong, like Occupy Central? There have been many ways to stir up people's emotions, and just a few days ago, they carried out rehearsal, as if you do not engage in such unlawful activities, you are not being In the police bulletin or police magazine, do you try to publicize to the public what is considered unlawful, and then people should engage in unlawful activity, and occupying this, occupying that is unlawful or not? That's my first question. Now, in Taiwan, people occupying the Legislative Yuan, and they also charge at the Executive Yuan. In Hong Kong, in a course of the constitutional reform discussion, if someone wants to occupy the Legislative Council, are you under any pressure with that possibility? And are you doing any preparation to maintain law and order in Hong Kong? Secretary?
Now, yes, we have read a lot about media reports on what's happening in Taiwan. Of course, some newspapers do not just report on the incidents, they make commentaries as well. And there are many newspapers also make other comments on these incidents in Taiwan. I believe when the public read such information, they will be able to see views on both sides, and they are able to judge for themselves. Hong Kong practices the rule of law. All residents here have the obligations to observe the law. For whatever reasons, I would say that Hong Kong people would not accept any behavior that deliberately flouts the law or disturbs the peace and order in Hong Kong. The Hong Kong Police Force will act strictly in accordance with the laws of Hong Kong and the powers conferred by the laws and deal with such matters appropriately. Some reported news that the Legislative Yuan in Taiwan was occupied. Would that happen in Hong Kong? I understand the Legislative Council itself or its relevant commission will discuss the matter and come up with some plans. If there is need to seek advice from the police, I'm sure the police force would be more than happy to do so.
Next, Mr. Tan Ka-piu. Thank you. I have two questions to ask. One is one eight three, in relation to an increase of manpower. Well, both the staff and management side of the CNE department reflect, to start with, the number of visitors, inbound visitors increasing, there is tremendous pressure. Of course, they have to go through the control point. The CNE department will conduct checks on dutiable goods and relevant items, and they have a shortage in manpower to practice risk management. I see that for other departments, there has been increase of manpower by over a hundred. So do you have any indicators on that the manpower level should be packed to the number of visitors from various places, mainland, US, et cetera? And then, two oh two, zero, two zero, about the Unified Screening Mechanism, it says that there are altogether six thousand six hundred and ninety-nine unscreened cases. Two thousand nine hundred and sixty-two of them have been rejected. However, in these cases, the claimant come up with another grounds to make an application again. We now have a new system, so has the bureau conducted any assessment on how many years it will take to tackle all six thousand six hundred and ninety-nine cases? Perhaps I will first answer your second question. For the first one, I will defer to the CNE department. Yes, with the Unified Screening Mechanism, we have a number of cases to be dealt with. Given the recent judgment of the court, some cases make claims. For these cases, their original claims have been completed, and they were waiting for refoumen. And as a result of the court case, there is an increase in number. We plan that we will vet one thousand five hundred cases in one year. In relation to other reasons given previously that with cases, well, since there are records, there is a possibility, of course, there is only a possibility, because we have to be fair. These cases can be dealt with more swiftly. For the first part, I will defer to the CNE department. When it comes to law enforcement, we should not just focus on control points. You may know that because of the number of inbound visitors, we have put in a lot of manpower at border control points, but if we rely solely on border control points, our work will not be effective. So we have to make adjustments to our strategy, first intelligence gathering and outreach work related to forbidden items and restricted items, including drugs. We will enhance our enforcement action by cooperating with mainland authorities. We will do better in our risk assessment, and internally, we will work with stakeholders, say, for example, travel agents, airline companies, and logistic companies. They have their own network, and they make observations, and they may supply us with intelligence. And these works, this type of work is done outside the border control point. Indicators, I think you can refer to the stance of counterparts. Second one, Mr. Gary Fan. Just now, Mr. Wong Kok-hing of FTU said that the media has misled the incident. I think it is the case of the devil rebuking sin, because, well, I think he is the one that has misled the public. Reply number SB zero four one, about specified unmarked armored vehicle to deal with criminal cases that are high-risk and more dangerous than others. So what is the urgency of buying such kind of armored vehicles? And the reply said that this is not related to Occupy Central. So is it a case that there will be a change in procurement that targets Occupy Central? And I also want to ask about reply number zero eleven, that is, in relation to investigation into false information supplied by people holding one-way permit. Who are the people responsible for such investigations? What are their ranks and what resources are used? Well, for the first question, I'll defer to the police, and the second one, I'll defer to the Immigration Department. In relation to our special duties unit, the armored vehicle, of course, is anti-terrorist and to protect very important persons, and in cases of serious crimes, to protect our officers from harm coming from explosives or ammunition. This is more closely to a civil vehicle than a military vehicle. So will the procurement objective change in the future? When it comes to procurement, we have to follow the established procedure. We can't change the purpose. Immigration Department. Well, I think you're referring to an investigation of bogus marriage. Well, we have several hundreds of people in our investigation team. There is a task of force with twenty dozen people investigating into bogus marriage to get one-way permit. We gather intelligence, we receive intelligence, and sometimes when we mount operations, say, for example, we have arrested some sexual sex workers or some illegal workers, and we found that they are married to a Hong Kong person. We find these cases suspicious, and we will investigate into whether these are genuine marriages. And during our investigation, in some cases, there is an involvement of syndicates. So this team will use the approach I've just mentioned, intelligence gathering, report received, and intelligence gathered from people arrested. You said that in twenty thirteen, then there is no cases on record based on investigation taken on your initiative. That means all these cases are the result of intelligence received. Now, by that, I mean that when we find the case is suspicious, we will take the initiative to investigate into such cases. Can you give us the figures of cases that are investigated from your own initiative? Yes, after the meeting, I want to ask a question about SB one oh nine. I see that in recent years, there are some non-reformable cases. The number has increased in twenty twelve is one thousand one hundred and seventy-four, and in twenty fourteen, it is reckoned that there will be an increase by about twenty percent. It will reach about one thousand five hundred cases. I think the administration feel that there will be a lot of people coming to Hong Kong. We support the administration's approach to afford protection to persons that may be subject to torture and inhuman treatment. But the number of cases may still be on the low side. They arrive in Hong Kong, we give them subsidies, and their attitude sometimes is one that they will be quite aggressive, because they are not happy with the amount received. But you have to think about the treatment they're subject to in their home country. They want to work in Hong Kong during their stay, and I want to know how much time it will take for the whole process to be completed, that is, to verify their claim. And during their stay in Hong Kong, apart from giving them subsidies, living allowance, well, sometimes, because they don't have anything to do, they will gather around at street corners, and it affects women, especially people living in remote areas or the new territories. They feel threatened. So is there any way for their process to be expedited? And are there any measures in place to assure our women? We are concerned about the situation mentioned by the legislature. There has been a hike in number of cases after the court case. In some cases, they are rejected cases. Our experience tells us that, yes, the majority of them is an abuse of our system. We will expedite the process to deal with the claims as soon as possible. Since every case is different, it's difficult to tell you how long it will take. But once a decision is made, then there can be appeal, there can be a court hearing, and it will take quite some time. We will expedite the processing of the cases. As the Secretary said, we hope to complete over one thousand cases a year to clear the backlog. At the same time, we will take enforcement action. People who abuse our mechanism, the major purpose of them coming to Hong Kong is for economic reasons. They want to make money in Hong Kong. So emphasis is to target employers who employ illegal workers, workers who are in Hong Kong on reconnaissance. Next, Mr. Christopher Jung. Thank you. I would like to follow up on SB zero zero nine, question from Christopher Jung about Occupy Central. Well, because of the incident in Taiwan, it will have an impact in Hong Kong. Have they taken any actions or taken any assessment on Occupy Central? And some people who are involved in Occupy Central campaign have gone to Taiwan, and it seems that they're learning from the experience in the occupation of the Legislative Yuan. Will you also learn from Taiwanese police to clear the crown? To make sure that Hong Kong police will have the ability to maintain law and order? Secretary, thank you. The advocates of Occupy Central has been saying that they will try to get over ten thousand people to Occupy Central for a long time to paralyze our economic center in Central, and in this way to force the government and the central authority to accept their demand.
Please allow the Secretary to finish replying to the question. Secretary, please continue. I must point out that any unlawful obstruction of any centers or districts in Hong Kong would undermine the law and order in Hong Kong. It will affect, it would disturb peace and order. And for the consequences that might be brought about, we express a high degree of concern about that. The police force is prepared adequately. The police force is prepared adequately. And we have full confidence in the Hong Kong Police Force in that they will be able to enforce the law in a fair and impartial manner. On the one hand, it will protect the interests of people of Hong Kong. And at the same time, they will ensure the normal operation of business activities in Hong Kong. And for anyone who are preparing to stage any public order offense for whatever mean objectives, they must do so in a lawful and orderly manner. Now, our police force is well-trained. And our force has much experience in handling various kinds of public order events. We believe our police force has the capacity to handle such events properly. So far, we have no plans to go to Taiwan and see how they handle such events. Thank you. Next, Mr. Long Chi Ching. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I may, follow up on SB oh six eight. There are some figures. Yunnan District. Domestic incidents. Yunnan District, you know, is on the top of the list. It has the highest number of such incidents. And in the secretary's speaking, open remarks, he mentioned that there will be a new police district in Changquan O. There will be additional resources and manpower. But it seems that for those districts with the highest number of crime cases and the situation has improved since two thousand nine. And the figures have remained high for these districts. Yunnan is experiencing rapid development. Tsinghua has a population of three hundred thousand. Hongqiu will be developed also. There'll be major developments there, actually. So would you deploy more resources to Yunnan in the light of these changes? Commissioner?
Now, in the light of developments in the northeast new territories, the police will study the delineation of the police district boundaries. You look at the population, new infrastructure, and new development plans as we do so. So this year, we will see whether there is a need to turn some divisions into districts, police districts, or whether there should be other arrangements for existing police districts. If necessary, we will ask for additional resources from the government. Well, in terms of domestic incidents in Yunnan, the figure has remained high. In fact, Yunnan is top on the list. And there's been no improvement over the years. If you do not provide additional resources or manpower, how can you say that for Northeast Antifa, you do more, but here you just keep it under observation? Because if you do so, you really cannot convince members that that's the right way to go about it. Anything else from you, Commissioner? Well, the policy has always been that if there are new developments, the government will consider our request for new resources. And that's why we're taking this opportunity to revisit the boundaries of police districts. For Northeast Antifa, if you draw up new boundaries, what are the criteria? For Changquan O, I mean. Well, for Changquan O, its population has far exceeded that of the population level for division. That's why we're going to upgrade Changquan O Police Division to Changquan O Police District. As for Kaolin East, there will be infrastructural developments such as Kai-Tech Development, Anderson Road Development. In the light of that, we will also review the boundaries of the police divisions in Kaolin East. But Changquan O, you know, Tsinghua, doesn't it have a similar population than Changquan O? Well, how come Tsinghua cannot be a police district? Well, of course, the crime level in Changquan O has attracted much attention in the past few years. And also, Saikong will be incorporated in Changquan O. That's part of the consideration we are looking at. But I just said for Yunnan, crime level is high. So why won't you either set up a new division or deploy more manpower? Next, please, Ms. Emily Lau, Deputy Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the replies to questions about entertainment, and so I can see that the expenses for many discipline services have dropped. I've tried to find out the reasons from discipline services. And they said it's probably because of mainland. And because the habits on mainland has changed because mostly entities were mainland officials or maybe few are visiting Hong Kong. But then someone reminded me, we shouldn't just look at the discipline services. For other government departments, let's go should also pay attention to their expenses. So I'm sending out this message now. For all officials with such entertainment vote, you have to be very careful. It's not just the Legislative Council. The media, the public are all watching you closely. So can you explain why there's a drop in such expenses? Of course, we're all for it. I think we should be more frugal so we support such drop in expenses.
Secretary?
For every entertainment expense item, it should be on a need basis. In our exchanges with other organizations or individuals, there is need to entertain, then of course, we will do so. Now, there's no need to make adjustments because of any external factors because the line withdrawn is clear. Ms. Lau mentioned it could be because there are fewer mainland departments visiting Hong Kong. Now, I don't have the actual figures at hand. If that is indeed the case, it might explain why we're spending less. Of course, if there's no one visiting Hong Kong, then there's no need to entertain visitors. And for each department, there is a cap on entertainment expenses. And we pay special attention to that. If there should be an existence of the limit, then in accordance with procedures, they must note the reason for exceeding the limit.
Mr. Chairman, at the last session, I asked the Secretary for Constitution and Mainland Affairs. Actually, every secretary receives the same question. He explained that in the past year, that the rules have been spelled out more clearly. The bills might not be split and tips must be included. I think it must be because of Timothy Tong. I think we should thank him. Now, many pay special attention to the discipline services. But actually, we should also pay attention to other departments and bureau. So, Secretary, can you be specific? Can you make sure that there are specific guidelines? So what happened with Timothy Tong, would it happen again with the discipline forces? Secretary?
Well, on entertainment, there are specific rules for the different discipline services. And I've also reminded heads of services to strictly abide by the entertainment rules, including the entertainment expense limits and procedures.
Well, you said if they spend more than the limit, they must explain. So you encourage them to spend more than the limit? Definitely not. But I must give you an example. Let's say there's an entertainment for ten persons and we have already ordered the food. But then one person said at the last minute, he wouldn't be able to come. And so you divide it by per head, of course, then already it costs more because the restaurant's prepared for food for you. They won't charge you less. They won't charge you for one person less. But then that's why the reason must be spelled out. Next, Dr. Kenneth Chen. SB oh oh four, contingency plan in the event of a nuclear incident. I think there was recently an announcement. The day before Thursday, last Thursday, there was a nuclear incident at Lingao. While the Civic Party conducted an opinion poll, seventy percent of the public do not know about the contingency plan in a nuclear incident. They didn't know what they need to do. And seventy percent of those surveyed said that they were not confident with the contingency measures put in place by the government. They did not think those measures were adequate. Now, over the years, the government has been staging drills for in the event of a nuclear incident at Tiananmen Bay and so on. We should be doing more in the coming financial year. Because from the reply, it seems that the secretary is happy. There was a review in 2011, and then 2012, there was a drill, and that's it, no more. Now, if you do another drill, and now the government is discussing the energy mix, it's possible that we could be using more nuclear energy or maybe China Light and Power is buying more nuclear energy. And so with such development, and then we also saw the announcement last Friday about the Lingao incident. So what do you plan to do in the coming year?
On monitoring incidents, there is a mechanism in place that we implement together with the mainland. After the Fukushima incident, the Fukushima incident, we already reviewed the mechanism. The pre-Fukushima mechanism was that when there was a level two or above incident, an announcement must be made. For a level zero or level one incident, there is only a need to make an announcement once a month on the website of the nuclear plant. After the Fukushima incident, the public, of course, became more concerned about the possibility of nuclear incidents. That's why, together with the mainland departments and the power plant station, we've reached an agreement for level zero incident. Level zero means there's no impact at all. It's just that within the nuclear plant, there could be a minor incident. Now, what happened a few days ago? There were many monitors in the power station. One of the monitors broke down. Now, they are very concerned about any abnormalities in the power plant. Even if it's just that a few lights have gone off, they would be very concerned. So that's what we mean by level zero incident. But for level one incident, an announcement is made within two working days. That's new arrangement. And since we've reached this agreement, this has been done. For any incident from level zero up, they will make announcement as soon as possible. Thank you, Secretary, for your explanation. I think my question is clear. The majority of the people do not know what's going on. They don't understand, and they doubt whether there's enough being done. So can you tell us whether you will do more in terms of public education publicity or even drills? Public education, we do that all the time. Time's up, next, please, Mr. Kwok Wai Keng.
Thank you. SB two oh two. I asked about drug treatment and service and the resources available. Now, in the reply, you don't give a figure on the waiting time. That's not right because then it's not possible for us to see whether there is need to provide more resources. And then in reply, paragraph one, there are four hundred places in drug treatment centers, and there are still three hundred places available. So that means there's still room. But then we learned from frontline staff that in some districts, the clearing time is long. Is it because that these drug treatment centers are not in every district? So in some districts, people can't get their service. In other districts, the places are not fully used up? That's my first question. And next, SB oh oh five five. Conventional drugs could be intercepted at the customs point. But then for pills, you know, psychotropic drugs, not many could be intercepted at the boundary checkpoint. Is it because there are not enough resources or technology? Is there a need to ask for additional resources from this council? Third question is on the fire services establishment. I understand a hundred and thirty-seven posts were created. For ambulance service or fire services, it's because they are labor intensive? So you have reduced the establishment of cooking staff in fire stations? Now, I find that surprising. For kitchens in fire stations, the crew there serve firemen. They provide them with safe food. Why do you want to face out such kitchen crews? Why do you want to go for outsourced services instead?
You have three questions, and time is short. I will first defer to the Commissioner for Drug and then FSD. First, in relation to the service places. So you're talking about the drug rehabilitation centers. Please talk to the microphone. Commissioner for Narcotics. Between April and December twenty thirteen, that is the figure. There are some cases being processed. There may be some new cases or cases that have not been completed. And these numbers are not included. So it is not what it sees that there are unused places. In relation to the the drug treatment center, it's one of our services. There are eleven centers for drug counseling. It's sufficient to meet the demand all over the territory. And as to what type of services needed by drug users, it's for the relevant social welfare body or probation officer to decide in discussion with with the drug user. We are confident that we will be able to meet demand. Sorry, your time's up, but well, much time has been spent on fiddling with the microphone. FSD or CNE Department? Thank you. The FSD will increase one hundred and thirty-seven poses in the coming year. They are mainly fire frontline staff members in relation to the kitchen crew is supported by government cooks and also outsourced services. And the VR Gray will reduce the number of staff from our permanent establishment. Next, Mr. Ip Kook Kim. I would like to follow up on SB forty seven, a question asked by me. This is in relation to the police force about the enhancement of the scope of service. And they have conducted a satisfaction survey and public opinion survey. And I asked what else they have done. And I've got a reply. There are fourteen districts and fifteen non-ethnic Chinese as community liaison assistance. When it comes, it's difficult for us to reach out to non-ethnic minorities. Is it sufficient? Can more resources be devoted to it? And in your reply, I see that you will enhance the work of the JPC, Junior Police Corps, and DFCC District Fight Crime Committee. Well, I fully agree, uh, that resources should be devoted to JPC, but they are more the, more the, um, obedient ones. But there are some that are antisocial. These youngsters are quite antisocial. Will you put in place special measures to strengthen your, um, your communication with this group and to increase support to them? Commissioner. Promoting a community relation is an important part of our work. We would like to, um, cover all, uh, different groups, including ethnic minorities. And in relation to this group, uh, we have been doing a number of things. We recruit ethnic minority youngsters to join our JPC program. And we have in place the community liaison assistance to strengthen communication. The third area is liaison with religious, uh, the, um, the, the leaders of their religion. We don't have a limit on community liaison assistance. As needed, the police district will make an application to the headquarters and we will make use of our internal resources to meet the, uh, demand. Of course, JPC is a very successful program. While expanding JPC, we, we don't forget other youngsters that need our assistance. There are many different types of cooperation schemes with youngsters. There are altogether sixty, including, um, youth at risk. There is also a superintendent discretion scheme and we will make use of our own resources to do our work. But I see that there are fourteen police districts employing a total of fifteen non-ethnic, um, ethnic, fifteen non-ethnic Chinese. But there are some areas, say Yunlong, Yaochimong, there are more ethnic Chi, uh, non, there are more, uh, non-ethnic Chinese, the ethnic minorities living there. Will more resources be devoted to these areas? Commissioner. We will give full support to our frontline officers to fulfill their duty. If they need more help, they can surely ask. But there are only fifteen such assistants. Uh, is it the case that you have unlimited resources and you will be able to give more when required? Apart from these assistants, we establish communications with different ethnic minority groups. And we don't rely just on the assistant to maintain communication. We have the, um, PPRB and the police district to maintain communication and liaison with these areas. One three nine is the num, reply number. This is in relation to the electronic, uh, home visit permit. And as at April, there has been a reduction of six staff members. But there, there are more and more visitors are using e-channel. So has, uh, an estimate been made on the future number? And in relation to the reduction of immigration officers, has this factor been taken into account? My, my question wasn't answered. And next is SB one three one. Relation to the three border control points, Lian Tang, uh, Hong Kong Drive, Cow Bridge, and, um, and another one. They will deal with every year sixty, sixty million visitors, which is a huge number. They make the estimation based on data given by other departments, but has the immigration department done their own assessment? And have they also taken into account future deployment? The department said that they are conducting studies. But we're talking about twenty one five is a Hong Kong, um, Guangdong, Hong Kong Shenzhen Expressway and twenty sixteen is Lian Tang. So can I be given a more, uh, concrete timetable? My third question. But you know, the red shirts in Thailand have taken, uh, the commercial district in Bangkok. As a result, the number of visitors to Thailand has plunged. If in the future there is Occupy Central, will there be any changes in inbound visitors? And when will you be able to give us the estimate? Three questions. In relation to the number of, um, visitors and this increase, we have taken into that, we have been monitoring that and we have done our assessment. And we would, apart from increasing manpower, we at the same time increase our productivity, our capacity. We expand the use of e-channel and we have launched non-stamp, non-stamping clearance procedures. These various measures improve our productivity and our capacity at, uh, border control points. Increasing manpower is one of the ways, but not the only one. We propose to increase one hundred and seventy, thirty seven, eighty of them will be posted at border control points to alleviate the pressure resulting from increasing number of inbound visitors. Every year, we will conduct assessment and review of our manpower requirement and find room for improvement. And every year, we will, um, relate our request to the Secret, to the Bureau. In relation to the three border control points, before their commission, we will conduct, uh, assessment and you'll find the information in the reply. Based on the assessment, we will make application, uh, we will apply for increase of manpower from the administration. What about Occupy Central? That is in relation to SB one three nine. Oh, the third question, you mean. Perhaps I will take this question. The, um, the situation is still developing. We will keep, we will closely monitor, monitor it. Next, Mr. Kenny Floam. It says zero six one and zero six five, two questions asked by me. First, zero six one. I asked about the installation of CCTV devices and the numbers. I did not ask the police to disclose the location, but this question was not answered. I only asked about the number. And in relation to zero six five, it is in, in relation to, uh, video recording of, of, by the police in public events. In his, in the reply, a table was given to set out the number from twenty eleven to twenty thirteen and the number of video clips taken. And every year, there is a batch of, uh, clips kept. I want to know between twenty eleven and twenty thirteen, the clips stored. For how long have they been stored? Weeks, months, and the longest clip, how long has it been, um, stored? And in the reply and in the table, it also talks about reasons for maintaining the clips. He says, as evidence for, or for investigation. Can you give me a breakdown of the number for evidence and, uh, investigation? Say, for example, fifteen clips maintained in twenty eleven, you said is for evidence or investigation. Tell me how many of them are for evidence and how many for investigation? And under the category of evidence, does it mean that this is used only for prosecution as evidence? Thank you. Who is to take this question? Commissioner for Police. Yes. I will answer about, um, clips used for evidence or investigation. As you all know, that when a crime has taken place, uh, we might have taken the video clips and is at beginning for investigation. And later, at the stage when the DOJ decided to, um, take up prosecution, it will be used as evidence. So it is actually a, a chain. The DOJ makes a decision to prosecute or not, or the court has completed the hearing of the case and we decide at these two stages whether to maintain the clip. We can segregate, um, these two different categories, but it means additional work. And I would like to say that when it comes to video clips, including those maintained or kept, is a small number compared to the number of P O Es, public order events. Every year, we have clear guidelines to make, to ensure that we will protect the privacy of the parties involved. The media, we have got control of the media used. And when it comes to, um, duplication, there are also controls. And when it comes to, uh, the clips being destroyed, they have, people will have to follow guidelines. When it comes to the number of CCTV installed, we don't have the number, sorry. We don't have the number, uh, on hand, but can you give me the number? Can you find the information and give me number? Uh, yes, I'll, I'll go back to look into it.
Mr. Albert Chen. Some pro-establishment camp members are not politically correct to learn or from others or visit other countries and see how people clear the scene or suppress demonstrators. But they should go back to the mainland, our great motherland, to learn. In Mau Ming recently, they, um, opened fire at, um, uh, children or go to Beijing and learn how you use tankers to suppress the demonstrators. Why should they go to Taiwan to learn? So the, um, pro-establishment camp, they are not politically correct. If you don't want to go to the mainland, go to North Korea, see how the people there suppress, uh, the general public. So I think you have to be politically correct. Why would you go to Taiwan to learn from them? Well, that's not politically correct. I just want to correct you. My question is about multiple entry permits. SB oh nine four. The figure given for multiple entry permits in the past three years has been a substantial increase. Twenty eleven, six million, twenty twelve, ninety million, twenty, uh, um, twenty twelve, ten million, and twenty thirteen, twelve million. Multiple, uh, visit endorsements. And that's why we see such a catastrophe um, with the flooding of visitors here. You know, people can't get on the MTR and then there are so many parallel traders. And the MTR corporations, um, actually offer concessionary fares to visitors. We should condemn the MTR corporation. They just try to cozy up to mainlanders and they ignore the rights and interests of Hong Kong people. Now, you are the secretary. You know, does Hong Kong have any rights and powers or are we just lackeys? Do we just follow instructions from the north? Because, um, these, um, multiple entry permits are causing so many problems. You're in charge of immigration control in Hong Kong. Do you see that the problem is so serious now? You have to report, reflect it. And Hong Kong should do something on its own. If you, after you've reflected the views, they won't listen to you. Would you consider the proposal of the People's Power, that is, you levy a land entry tax so that, um, this individual visitors will not cause any nuisance and inconvenience to the people of Hong Kong? Secretary. Mr. Chairman, I certainly do not agree to the term lackey. I'm a public servant of Hong Kong. I serve the people of Hong Kong. Everything we do, we do so for public interest, for public good. In SB oh nine four, in the reply, you see three sets of figures. Twenty thirteen, take that as an example. Among mainland visitors, about a third, roughly about a third. You can see there are about three parts here. There's a total number. There's one column. And then, um, those holding multiple entry permit is another figure. And those holding single or double journey individual endorsement, that's another figure. So for single or double journey visits and multiple journey visits, you can see the figures more or less the same, the two sets of figures. So Hong Kong, I think time's up. I'm talking about the, um, staggering increase. That's what I'm talking about. I don't think the secretary's got my question. Next, Mr. James To. Oh, he's not here. And then, Ms. Ho, Ms. Ho then. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. SB oh one three. Records management. In the appendixes one, two, three, we see how many records are given to the public records office for consideration. How many will be, um, capped? How many will be destroyed and so on? Now, the, the period is long, from nineteen sixty-two to twenty ten, all cases, um, of files closed. So some fifty years. But in though, uh, in forty-eight years, all records submitted to the public records office are administrative records. There are no program records at all in those, in that period, not a single one. Um, the, there is the Government Record Service. So how many records are you still keeping and not sending to the Government Record Service for assessment? And actually, in the past three or four decades, only twenty-seven are to be kept and hundred and thirty-three records should be, uh, have to be destroyed. Of course, I don't believe that so many, so few files have been closed over fifty years. Where are these files kept? And what mechanism is there within the Security Bureau? How is the Bureau or even you, how are you monitored to see that you comply with the, um, administrative guidelines on records, um, management issued in two thousand and nine? On handling administrative records, we strictly comply with the guidelines published by the Government Record Service. Now, we will submit a list to the Government Record Service, um, regularly. And then they will decide whether certain records, um, should be capped. And if these records, um, do not need to be kept, then they will give us permission to destroy the records. Now, of course, um, the administrative records may include discussions on policy issues. And in line with the government's mechanism, we do submit such records to the Government Record Service for appraisal. Now, what, uh, on what records should be kept and what should be destroyed, we go by the instructions of the Government Record Service. Administrative records may be about, um, office management, financial matters, accounting matters, procurement matters and so on. After studying the records, the, um, Government Record Service may decide that we could destroy these records based on the relevant timeframe limit. How come in the free appendices for Security Bureau, there are no program records at all? How come there are only administrative records? Why? Why can't I only say that we go by the directions of the Government Record Service to dispose of records? For records not destroyed, that means they are still kept, uh, within the Bureau or in warehouses of the Bureau. Chairman Secretary, don't think that we don't understand the procedure. Of course, it gives you instructions, but you must first submit the list. You must first give them the list of records and then they will tell you which records should be sent to them for further appraisal. How come there is not a single program record? Who is to monitor whether you are complying with the administrative guidelines? Next, time's up. Mr. James To.
A question for the Commissioner of the Police on staff involved in investigation. Now, there are cases that the general public cares much about. Uh, so sometimes even the Commissioner of Police would come out to speak on such cases. I think there have been one or two cases that have been dragging on for a long time. Um, I wonder if you followed up. The first one is about the, um, the Lema Island ferry collision. the Lema Island ferry collusion disaster. Now, Mister Michael Lunt, um he conducted inquiry. The report was made public and even the director of marine conducted an investigation. Of course, the, the victims of family, the family's victims would like the Commissioner of Police to investigate these cases. Now, the shipmaster is being prosecuted for manslaughter. But then they wonder if anyone has committed negligence of duties. They've talked to the marine. Now, can you tell us whether you're actually looking into the cases? Uh maybe you're in the middle of the investigation or near the end of the investigation, but, but no information is forthcoming at all. Uh when we asked you how many witnesses have you met, we didn't ask for names. We just asked how many witness statements you've taken. So we want some objective facts to see whether you are actively investigating the cases. But when we asked the police, they gave us the impression that when we asked, that we were asking so many questions because we did not believe in them. Now, that's strange. And that case is a D R case, you know, about the beauty treatment case. Now, we've been seeing good progress because we have meetings with you every two or three months. But now, it's been two years still, nothing is coming out of the investigation. In the past, you have come out to express a concern about the case. So why are you stuck for these cases? Is it because of anything unique for the D R case? And you know, it's been two years now and we've heard nothing further about it. So can you please give us some information? Uh are you in a position to talk about these cases, the Commissioner?
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Of course, the police are concerned about the two cases, especially the Lama Island ferry collusion tragedy. But as you know, the police conducting investigation, we are in a stage of meeting with the relevant governments and staff members of relevant organizations. We also in closely touch with the Department of Justice. We would like to complete the investigation soon. As for the D R case, that's about medical beauty treatment. And evidence cannot be provided, obtained simply by a police investigation, but we hope to complete the case soon as well. For the Lema Island tragedy, Mister Michael Lunt took half a year to conduct inquiry. And then the secretary Jen Li said, and then Miss Li said that it would take him a long time too to go through all the reports and so on and meet the witnesses. So it's, so it's been one and a half years since. Could you at least give us a rough estimate, how much longer you need? Well, it's not for the police to say intellectually when we can complete the investigation. We'll try to complete the investigation as soon as possible. Thank you. Okay, next, Mister Martin Quoc.
S B one nine eight, government flying service, the usage of training planes. Now, I asked the G F S to give information on their exchange, two exchange activities with other organizations. With which organization, for example, the fixed wing aircraft, their flying time of one thousand one hundred and thirty-seven hours. Uh and I see a lot of training hours. But for the two fixed wing aircraft for training, the flying hours are so low, they don't make sense. For example, the two hour, one and twenty-four, every, in one year, they were just forty-nine hours. And then in twenty thirteen, D A four-two N G flew only eighty hours, or less than an hour in a week, or just over an hour in a week. The administration replied that in the, the D A four-two N G was bought so to enhance training for their staff, for the crew. Now, previously, there was report questioning the need for buying such fixed wing crafts for training purposes. So for the two fixed winged aircraft, out of the one thousand odd hours of flying time, how much was the time was for training? Now, for, if the training flying hours are at such low level, the, is that in line with the original purpose of buying these two crafts? If the, the training flying hours are so low, does it mean that there's not cost effective?
Thank you. First, about the um forty-one. Type forty-one plane is mainly for training pilots in rescue operations. And the Slin and D A two-four-two L, the um dual-wing aircraft, they are for training for our intern pilots. For the Slin four-two, uh two-four-two L and D A four-two N G is for you, for use for those who are newly joined to get used to our service. For the fixed wing is for route training. We can achieve cost effectiveness for the trainees to get flight hours because when it comes to obtaining of license, they have to reach a certain number of flying hours before they can obtain these licenses. So if these pilots use our operation aircrafts for training, it will be too expensive and we don't want these operation aircrafts to leave Hong Kong. That's why we use these other aircrafts to train our pilots in route training. In the past year, the number of hours is on the low side because we've just recruited our um junior pilots and they are receiving training overseas. When, once they have come back in the coming six months or year for the D N forty-two usage will increase. Next, Mister Chong Ho Pan. Two follow-up questions, zero-zero-eight and one-six-nine. Zero-zero-eight. About the number of um people engaged in a general merchandise activity, uh activities and also the monitor list. And last year in about March, there are about one thou, four thousand people on the list and the number of people rejected only amount to one thousand. And the number on the list recently is eight thousand seven hundred, but only four hundred people have been rejected. So I think it's not proportional because the number of people on the list amount to four, eight thousand seven hundred. Only four hundred people have been rejected when they tried to come to Hong Kong. And in relation to one-six-nine, about the expansion of the correctional services department in their training program for the rehabilitated offenders. What's the situation when they are employed again? Is it going well? What about rehabilitated offenders who have undergone training? Is the situation better? Commissioner. First, about the monitor list. When we compile the list, we take into account people who are arrested in operations. And on top of that, that there are people who on our record frequently come to Hong Kong. We put them on the monitor list. And when they come to Hong Kong, we will ask them why they're coming to Hong Kong to determine whether they're genuine visitors or they engage in general merchandise, illegal activities. That is engaging in dealing of paralite goods. So we ask each of them the purpose of their visit. If they can give us a valid reason, they will be allowed to enter, otherwise they will be turned back. Starting from last year, we have rejected the number, over fourteen thousand people who are suspected to be, suspected to be parallel traders. And I think that the situation is under control. And when it comes, well, I want to say that the number of people turned back and the number on the monitor list is not related. We want to ensure the purpose of these visitors to make sure that they don't come to Hong Kong to work or do anything to breach their condition of stay. Next, Miss Claudia Moore.
If I have another question, then, why I still have time, I still have more than a minute, but you have finished asking your questions. Okay, continue. I asked two questions, one about the C S D, one about the C N E department. I will defer to the Commissioner for Correctional Services. In relation to whether employers feel at ease to employ rehabilitated offenders, every year we conduct seminars. We appeal to employers to give a chance to rehabilitated offenders. And we also invite employers who have employed rehabilitated offenders to share their experience. We have done a lot of work and we have a long list of happy employers. Employers who are willing to recruit rehabilitated offenders. And very often, we will post vacancies in our institutions as well so that offenders can contact these employers before they are released. Miss Claudia Moore. Zero-seven-zero, about the animal protection scheme, about review the details of the scheme and the resources used. I think the answer is completely irresponsible, it's just going through the motion. They talk about a good cooperation between the community and the police. In some cases, animal groups go to pet shops and they see that the animals are living in hell. They call the police and the police arrived, but they allow the staff or the, or the owner of the pet shop to remove the animals and clean the premises. Upon the arrival of vets of the S P C A, well, they are not allowed to enter the scene. Well, I don't want an answer from you because you would just give me an official reply that is meaningless. It's just in relation to the animal watch scheme. And one-two-six, between two thousand nine and twenty thirteen, about the multiple entry. In two thousand nine, one point five nine million, twenty thirteen, twelve million. So over a period of four years, there is, there is an increase of nearly ten times. How can Hong Kong take it? Just look at Hong Kong, you all live in, at the peak or live in houses. Have you considered that when it comes to multiple entry, you at least have the right to raise it for possible reduction if not completely abolishing this? Would you consider imposing land uh tax?
In two thousand nine, we started the multiple entry scheme and since then, the number of inbound visitors under the scheme has been increasing, that is a fact. We look at Shenzhen, they have an increasing population. There is about three million permanent residents in Shenzhen. Not all of them will apply under the multiple entry scheme to come to Hong Kong. And in, in relation to the overall situation, Chairman, the administration can consider separating the different groups. Of course, if they come to Hong Kong to work and to study, then they are allowed. But when they come to trade in parallel goods, they should not be allowed to come. With the, with the operation to combat parallel trading activities, the situation has improved. Say, for example, every day if a person comes, goes past border control points, any one of them, for the third time, mainland authorities will be alerted under an automated system. Say, for example, first time it's a one control point, a second one, a different one, and a third one, a third different control point. Um there is an automated alert system where, in which a red light will blink. When I talk about mainland cases, because when it comes to parallel traders, there are also Hong Kong residents engaging in such activities. But when it comes to mainland residents in these activities, the number has reduced. Uh the commis, the, the director has given us a figure. The number, the situation has improved, whereas the number on the watch list is, has increased because once you're on the watch list, your name will not be taken off tomorrow. A clear message is sent to them that they're being watched. So as a result, the number of people rejected is, has decreased. When it comes to land entry tax, I've already given a very clear answer. Next, Mister Frankie Yik. S B zero-nine-two. About drunk driving and drug driving. So based on your judgment, which is more serious, drink driving or drug driving? That's my first question. And looking at the figure for twenty thirteen, maximum fine, maximum disqualification period and maximum imprisonment. I think it's inconsistent for drink driving, maximum fine fifteen thousand, whereas for drink, uh drug driving, six thousand. Disqualification, drink driving is shorter. But when it comes to imprisonment, drink driving is longer, so it's not consistent. Hi, my, how should I interpret the information? Commissioner. Both drink driving and drug driving are serious because they pose great danger to other role users. And I'm sure you can see when it comes to drink driving, there is a three-tier system for drug driving. Uh we have zero tolerance for six types of drugs. What's most important is whether our enforcement action is effective, whether it is drink driving or drug driving. Say, for example, drink driving. Since the new law has been effective, we have increased the number of random breath test by twenty-two point six percent. We found that those who failed the test has dropped by zero point three-three. Couple of years ago, it was zero point four-six and zero point four-one, so it's an improvement. On the other hand, drink driving causing casualty, the number has not decreased, so we should not let our guard down. And as to whether penalty is sufficient, we have to keep in mind the penalty imposed by the court. Say, for example, if the, if the tariff is low, even if it's a maximum sentenced by the court, then it's still low. But so far, in all the cases, none of them has reached the maximum penalty. Yes, that may be the case, but I want to ask a follow-up question. Based on your experience, is there sufficient deterrence from the court, from the penalties imposed by the, by the court? Do you have the figures about the, the panel of reoffen, of reoffending? We don't have the information because, well, we, we only have the enforcement number. Once a person is charged and the case has gone to court and if the sentence is too low, we will make a request to the D O J and it's for the D O J to decide whether to review sentence. Next, Mister Sheng Kim Paul. Thank you. S B O A two. This is in relation to the procurement of body worn video cameras. Recently, the panel on security Recently, the panel on security was told about the interim report of the body worn camera, body worn video cameras, because people involved are karma. And it's fair for both the parties involved and the police, because there is a fair video and audio recording. But for 2014 and 15, why the number procured is so slow, only 270? Well, why is it not rolled out extensively? What else do you want to test for?
Commissioner? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the first phase of trial, of course, we find that the body worn video cameras have been effective in dealing with certain situations, but what we haven't tested is the admissibility of such evidence in court. Because for cases that go to court, before we produce evidence, those, the, those charged have already pleaded guilty, so there's never a chance for us to test the admissibility of such evidence. Now, originally, it's just the Hong Kong Island Police District and a few other, the anti, the New Jersey PTUs and the EU that are using it, but we will extend the use of this embers to all PTUs, EUs, and also the anti-north quick response team. Why is it that we're not ruling out the cameras across the force? We have to consider technological advancement. We note a trend in technological advancement in future. Video recording could be linked to our communications devices, why we do not want to buy a full batch of devices and find very soon, we will need to replace them. Next, Mr. Ray Chen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to follow up on the Manila hostage case and the Luxa hot balloon incident in Egypt, SB 001 and 002. I asked specific questions, but the Security Bureau did not give the right reply. I asked how many meetings, the dates, the locations, those attending meetings, whether there were families of victims, whether the other parties attended. I also asked about the total expenditure. In both questions, the Security Bureau said that there is no breakdown of the manpower and expenditure involved, so you didn't really answer my questions, you just wrote half a page to tell us what difficulties you encountered and what you have done, that's the first point. Second one, point, I asked the Bureau what actually you're going to take in future to accept pressure on the Philippines. The administration just said that it wished to do something, that is, the SL government would like the Philippines government to show greater sincerity in addressing issue. But you did not say whether you have further sanctions in mind if they do not respond to you. Secretary? Mr. Chen asked how much we spent, I understand that's part of your question. Now, our meetings with the other party, that did not involve any specific expenditure. After every meeting, or if necessary, before the meeting, we would have adequate communication with victims' families. We updated them on the latest progress, and if necessary, we would also seek their views before we went to meetings. Now, how many meetings did we have? We did tell the victims' families, but we do not think it's right to disclose the number openly, because we're still in contact with the other parties. Now, we have proceeded with the first phase of sanctions, we do not rule out further sanctions. But what I can tell members is that we're still in contact with the Philippines government, and all along, there have only been four demands. These have been repeated many times, and we would like to achieve those four, those four demands to be satisfied soon. But of course, I don't want to say here openly what we have said to them today, what exchanges have been made or what we have done. Because I believe if we try to disclose the information or the details of our effort so openly, that may not do good to the goal of achieving the four demands set down by the victims' families. Now, where we had meetings, how many were involved meetings, how much expenditure was involved with that, we could tell members. But then, in a sense, maybe there were colleagues involved, but they did not devote their time in full to such meetings, and we did not entertain anybody, so that's why there's no expenditure incurred, that's why, that's the only answer we could give you. I don't think the public are concerned about progress, I don't think the number of meetings should be a secret, that you can't even tell the public about it, because you want the public to know that you are still pursuing the matter to your, to your best effort. Now, for our contacts with the Philippines government and our meetings with the Philippines government at an appropriate time, we do give details to victims' families. Next, Dr. Helena Wong. SB 112. Non-local graduates who stay in Hong Kong, who come back to Hong Kong for employment, I asked for such information. Sorry, let me find a paragraph. 2009, non-local graduates from the mainland, those who stayed in Hong Kong for employment, from 2009 to 10, number of applications received, 3,222, approved applications, 3,262. Now, I don't get it. How come the number of applications approved is bigger than the number of applications received by 40? They didn't apply the 40, and then you just backed up to say, or what? Secretary, could you please enlighten me here, so I could follow these figures? Second question, if you look at the increase year on year, for mainland students coming to Hong Kong or staying behind after graduation, and the number of applications approved from 3,222, now it's gone up to 8,119. More than 100% or 200% increase, that I could understand, because you are implementing the government's policy. In Head 70 of the estimates, you mentioned that the government is to provide, to facilitate immigration clearance for non-local graduates to stay in Hong Kong, and here mainly what you are talking about mainland graduates, some 8,000 of them. So you're just opening the door to mainland students, you can all come to Hong Kong to study, and after you graduate, you will get an ID card and stay in Hong Kong to work, is that what you're saying? Now, of course, you are not the, probably not the only one who could answer the question, but I'm just asking whether the Security Bureau will consider this to get other government departments. Every year, if there are some 8,000 people from mainland coming to Hong Kong or staying behind after graduation and they find work here, how would that affect local people here? You know, local graduates, how are their prospects in finding jobs affected? Because I see a lot of local graduates having difficulties finding work, some may spend a year or two, still they couldn't find work. So are we just throwing the door wide open without any restrictions? And I know that universities could not take more than 20% of undergraduates who are not locals, but for graduate students, there's no restriction. Some 70, 80% of the students in graduate programs are mainland students, so what can you tell us? Maybe the secretary is not involved in labor policy, perhaps you could try to answer that. For non-local graduates who studied in local universities and then they graduate, they obtain a degree, whether it's a bachelor degree or a master degree or above, we welcome them to stay in Hong Kong for a simple reason. They have studied in Hong Kong, they graduated, they have expertise, they've learned skills and knowledge, if they are willing to stay behind Hong Kong, they could contribute to the talent pool of Hong Kong. Now, it's true, the majority of the non-local students are mainland students, but actually from the reply, you see there are other students too, coming from other regions or countries, they could also benefit from this policy. This policy is not place of origin specific, so there are mainland students, maybe they stay in Hong Kong for some time, they may leave too. But you're saying that all non-local graduates are treated equally. But he hasn't answered the other question, how come there are more applications approved than received? Well, you could follow up later. Next, Dr. Priscilla Lam. And then we're going on to the second round, and you could follow up then.
Mr. Chairman, if I may pick up on some points already raised by other members. In Taiwan, because of the trade pact incident, now I researched into WTO aspects, I knew Taiwan was really keen to join ECVA. Singapore also is so keen, and several Singapore and Taiwan are so envious of Hong Kong, but eventually, they were able to sign the pact, but then because of the infighting within community, then we see people occupying the legislative run, executive run, there was even bloodshed in conflicts. Now, Professor Benny Tai said in his first interview that he, they would first occupy Central, but that's not the ultimate goal, they want to occupy other parts of Hong Kong, they want to occupy Central so that they could paralyze Central, though the people can't go to work, that's the whole idea. Now, there are 28,000 police officers in Hong Kong, so they have to at least get enough people to join 20,000 or 28,000, so it's a one-for-one match. And so they be, they won't just paralyze Central, they will paralyze the central government offices and Legislative Council as well. Well, young people, of course, are passionate, and of course, there are various political forces behind them. So I want to know, in Hong Kong, in terms of starving level, how would the Hong Kong police deal with the issue? Some have suggested which you should send more policewomen to deal with students, and there are others who suggested forming vigilance squad. So what plans do you have in ensuring security of Hong Kong? Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As for any major public order events, POEs, the police would do a proper risk assessment, it will make the proper plans and preparations to cater for any possible chaos. So it's not to target any one event. Now, you refer to the Occupy Central now, but what acts will be carried out, we wouldn't know yet, but I, as the secretary has pointed out, we hope the public will express their demands and views in lawful and peaceful manner, and the police has the duty to ensure public order and safety. So we will take the necessary measures to deal with any activities or conducts that might threaten safety and order. Now, as a member of this council, I'm certainly against anyone occupying the Legislative Council, because we're using public money here, and any unlawful acts would be counterproductive. I think people of Hong Kong would not welcome any conduct that breaches the rule of law, so I'm sure such activities would be counterproductive. So under the leadership of the secretary and the commissioner, you must send out this message clearly and unequivocally, especially to secondary school students who are not yet adults. They have to understand, it's not about the price they pay themselves, it's about the entire community, our economy, and so on, there are a lot of public resources involved.
Now, we have the second round, three minutes each. Ms. Emily Lau. Thank you. Want to ask about Head 70, Immigration Department in relation to foreign domestic helpers. It says here that they will take active operations to combat foreign domestic workers taking outside jobs and to invest and to combat wages that are due and not paid by agencies. And recently, there has been public concern about abuse of foreign domestic workers. So you, the police will have the duty, you, the immigration will have the duty to appeal to them, to tell them that they should report the case to the police, and it will, it will involve resources, so why isn't this included? The Immigration Department attached a lot of importance on abuse cases against Filipino helpers, not just Filipino helpers, but foreign domestic workers, well, in particular, the Ariana case. We encourage foreign domestic helpers to lodge complaints. And when a foreign domestic worker resigns and come to us to go through the formalities, we will ask them why, and if the case involved abuse, we will refer the case to the police for follow-up. For confirmed cases, in which foreign domestic worker has been abused, we will give them assistance. Say, for example, they can stay in Hong Kong to find another job without having to go back to their homeland, and we will give them an extension of a period of stay for them to find another employer. And if an employer has been found guilty of abusing foreign domestic helpers, then that employer will never be allowed to employ another one. You are the first point of contact for foreign domestic helpers, what information would you give them? When they go through immigration, it will only take, it only takes a very short time. Now, we liaise with, we organize seminars with consulates and explain to them about the relevant legislation and law, or how much money will you put in it? We haven't separated this item. This is part of our job, it's difficult for us to separate it. Do you have enough money to do that? Yes, we have sufficient manpower as well. We will put substantial amount of money to make sure it happens. It's 013 in relation to record service. While the secretary, the bureau only give about 3,000 files or so for the police, including program records and administrative records, we're talking about 2.4 million files. How come that in the past three years, you gave a GRS all the files you have, well, nearly all the files you have kept from 1953 to 2013? It seems that you have accumulated that and then give it in one go to the GRS. And of course, I will next ask how many files is not transferred to the GRS? This PS4, the, for the Security Bureau, gave me the information to the CAS and other departments, but not the police. But do you have the manpower to deal with the over 2.4 million files? And next one, there is still about 1.2 million files to be appraised by the GRS. I think it's, it put a string on I think it's, it put a string on them if you give them such a large amount of records. This is done in accordance with government procedure in relation to creation, maintain, and destruction. The number may be high, but we have followed the same standard. We have a specified clerical officer to deal with records. For formation, we have one chief administrative, one CEO. In the different regions, the six regions, there will be a senior executive officer to make sure that everything is done in accordance with government procedures. I don't have the information as to how many records we have with us. I remain unconvinced that they've been following the procedure, because some records dated back to nineteen fifty-three. I think all the parties involved have passed away. If you follow the procedure, then you would have handed the record long ago. So have you truly followed fully to the procedure? Well, I emphasize that we have been following the government's procedure. Mr. James To, one nine seven, about the government flying service. In your reply, you said that between twenty eleven and twelve, when it comes to procurement of aircraft, one Challenger. And in two thousand nine, it was mentioned, and then there was a delay in approval, only by two years. So what's the situation now? I received some confidential information that the Department of Defense of some countries object to the use of infrared device and another device. And that's why the installation of these two devices have not obtained a certificate. Has the situation been resolved? Who's to take this question? Commissioner? A controller. First, the question about the delay. At this stage, the manufacturer is conducting different tests to improve stability. Hopefully, later this year, we will have a new timetable for consignment. And in relation to installations that cannot be exported in relation to an infrared detection and another device related to rescue. They have been installed. An initial test proved to be in order. And the major problem is in relation to a camera. There is no export control on the camera. But maybe I'll make myself clear. The information I have shows that the original technology was invented in the U.S., and there is a factory in Germany. Without some approval documents, the aircraft cannot be sent to Hong Kong. And so it's all right for you to conduct tests in Canada, because the aircraft is not in Hong Kong. So give me a written reply as to whether you have obtained the relevant approval documents. Last one is Dr. Helena Wong. Thank you. My question was not answered, and I want a written answer. And I now want to ask about one two two, the police. Head one two two. The police is also concerned, also deals with domestic violence cases. But it seems that there is little mentioned about sexual abuse cases. And I don't see any information about strengthening training of police officers. And we've received a lot of complaints saying that victims of rape cases, when making a report at the police station, will be subject to all the procedures lasting for over forty hours. And the victim was not allowed to sleep. And concerned groups are not allowed to attend interviews with the victim. And sometimes, when the victim would lie to make changes to the statement, the police officer will tell her that, well, you can't change it, because if you change it, it will take a longer time, and you really cannot leave. So I want to know, how do police officers deal with rape cases when a victim comes to make a report? Is there any professional training to enhance their sensitivity? Are there any code of practice? I know that it's not the case that all officers are like that. Are you aware of such a problem? Or is it the case that you think they don't need any training, because all your officers have been doing really well in this regard? Commissioner? If any person thinks that we are below the standard we then they should tell us. And when it comes to sexual violence cases, well, it's similar to domestic violence. We put in resources just like domestic violence. We will employ officers of the same sex. And there is a one-stop service provided to all seventeen public hospitals. And there is also round-the-clock referral from social workers. And when it comes to vulnerable victims, they can have the interview in the Vulnerable Witness Interview Suite. We understand that victims of sexual crime, sexual violence crimes would not want to go through the same, similar experience again. So we would, one, to take, we would be, we would like to take all these into account during investigation and dealing with all the parties involved. So this session ends now. The next session will start in ten minutes. That is five fifty. Thank you.